We'll call our eight o'clock agenda briefing order. I apologize for the delay. We had technical difficulties, wardrobe difficulties and everything else in the, in the mix. So, um, I'll call the meeting order at nine. Commissioner Foster will have the invocation. Commissioner Harson will have the pledge of allegiance. Discussions of the, or adjustments of the agenda. Do we have anything?
Yes, sir. Under, under special presentations number four, presentation of the Wayne County Hero Spotlight Award, we're going to remove that to a future date.
Okay.
Due to a scheduling conflict. And then number twenty, under the consent agenda, we're going to update the materials presented to you at that time. If you want to.
So we're going to do that at eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
That's under consent.
Gotcha.
Alright, and while we're making changes, I just want to let the board know that we will not be doing a pre-agenda on November twenty-fifth unless something changes because it's simply the organizational meeting. So there won't be anything that we need to discuss unless something changes. Um, so we won't have that with staff nor with the board on the twenty-fifth because the organizational meeting is on Monday, December second at the Maxwell Center.
Uh-huh.
At nine o'clock?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
You said December or November?
December second.
I was saying.
Which is a Monday.
But we're not having a pre-agenda meeting on.
But November twenty-fifth was the pre-agenda for that meeting and we're going to cancel that.
I'm sorry. I thought you said December.
And my understanding is that the Richard Deeds is being sworn in at eight o'clock in courtroom one here at the courthouse.
That is correct. That is correct. And then Judge Stackhouse will be at the Maxwell Center at nine for your, to administer your oath.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Alright, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting. Next, we're going to the special presentations. We, presentation of plaque to Commissioner Freeman Harson Jr. We've removed number four. Next would be motion to approve the twenty twenty-four National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County Proclamation. Is that, who have you got here doing the, um?
Um, we do not. That, that individual is actually out of state, so, um, whomever you would like from the board to read it.
Chip, you mind doing that?
I'd be glad to.
Okay. Okay, next would be motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Farmer City Week Proclamation presented by Corporate Extension Director Michelle Estrada. And she'll be here, correct?
No, sir. She's also out of town.
Okay, so who's reading that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the one Chip needs to read. The apprenticeship week, we will have someone here from Wayne County College. My apologies.
Okay. Alright, then we'll get to appointment committee to appoint Tobias Murphy to the Wayne County ABC Board replacing Chris King following his resignation. Then we'll go to unfinished business, motion to adopt the schedule of values for the twenty twenty-five reappraisal on real property in Wayne County. Then we'll go to, will Alan be here in case?
I will make a note on that, sir. Alan Lutkin is out of town, so TJ will be here if you have any questions when we get done.
Alright. Then we'll go to motion to adopt the form use schedule of values for the twenty twenty-five reappraisal of values in Wayne County. Any questions? Then we'll go to consent agenda, the late disabled veterans application, which all have been vetted, correct?
Yes, sir. They've all been vetted by the tax office.
Uh, late elderly disabled exemption application same?
Yes, sir.
Late present use value application same?
Same.
Late property tax exemption application same?
Correct.
Alright, budget amendments.
Budget amendment number one sixteen. This is from the library. The purpose of this budget amendment is to accept grant funds awarded from the LSTA, which is the Library Services Technology Act for IDA Continuing Education Scholarship in the amount of four thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Any questions? Okay.
Number one seventeen is also the library. This is to appropriate additional grant funds awarded from the State Library of North Carolina for non-recurring state aid for twenty-four, twenty-five in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Questions on that one? Okay.
One twenty-one Sheriff's Office. This is to record receipt of additional revenues for controlled substance tax from the North Carolina Department of Revenue in the amount of two hundred and eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Alright, run that one self-explanatory. Go ahead.
Number one twenty-two is from Cooperative Extension. This is to reappropriate funds from insurance reimbursement for vehicle damage repair in the amount of four thousand nine ninety-four eighty-nine.
Hey, we need to get out into deer hunting business, don't we?
They were rear-ended.
Oh, it says a deer. It said damaged by a deer.
Maybe it was. I think they were in. The other one may not come in.
Alright.
Number one twenty-three is for the Health Department. This is to anticipate and appropriate funds for the management of chronic illness in pregnancy for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Number one twenty-nine. This is for EMS. This is to reallocate funds in the amount of five thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars from office supplies to capital outlay vehicles or to add a light package to a new Tahoe that was purchased.
Okay.
Number one thirty is the Sheriff's Office. Purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate ARP funds for one-half of an allocation of their radios from twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And this is from ARP funds.
Okay.
Number one thirty-two. Let's see, one forty-six. One forty-six is also the use of ARP funds. This is to appropriate additional funds for the OES radio upgrade project in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Any questions on that?
And also attached to this budget amendment, I'm not sure if it made it in the agenda packet, but I have, I have updated the, I'll get this to you. I have updated the grant project ordinance to add these two projects using the ARP funds.
So it shows us our, what we've used in our balance?
Yes, all of the ARP funds have been allocated.
Alright.
The next budget amendment should be budget amendment number one thirty-two. This is from the Health Department. And this is to reallocate funds for their health education program, which is reducing infant mortality in communities. The funding will be used to purchase a trailer for, to store incentive items in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions? Okay.
Number one thirty-eight. This is rope funds, which is the Rural Operating Assistance Grant Funds. We are appropriating and anticipating two hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars in these funds.
Questions on that one?
And what in the world is rope? Rural operation assistance?
Operating assistance.
Well, I realize that, but what is?
So this goes to help, um, assistance with eligible transportation expenses. Most of it, it goes to gateway.
Oh, okay. Okay.
This is edtap money, employment money, and RGP money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Number one thirty-nine. This is from services on aging. And this is actually to reduce the amount of funds that were received from HCCBG. And they're actually reducing their general transportation line by three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Okay.
Number one forty-one is also services on aging. This is to appropriate senior health information insurance program funds in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars, bringing their total funding for this program up to nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I didn't mean to laugh. I'm just. Very good.
Number one fifty-three is for solid waste. This is to reallocate funds needed to purchase a forklift rotator that is necessary for the forklift that we're purchasing for recycling electronics in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Number one fifty-four is for soil and water. The purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate and anticipate funds that were awarded to be used for the stream debris cleanout in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Any questions?
The final budget amendment is number one fifty-five. This is for Office of Emergency Services. The purpose of this budget amendment is to request funds for a new position for the Assistant Fire Marshal for ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Have you got that one?
We do. I, I think what happened is, is she may have updated it after we downloaded this, so my apologies. We'll, um, pull that up real quick.
And Mr. Chairman, did Chip want to give any explanation in regards to the additional, uh, mid-budget or?
Be glad to. During the recent meeting of the Fire Marshal, it became clear that our required periodic fire inspections as mandated by section one oh six of the North Carolina Fire Code are not being conducted for several years. Initially, it was the local volunteer fire departments that were handling these inspections. However, we learned that our inspections department bears responsibility for these. Um, we're currently limited to conducting inspections for public schools, daycares, nursing homes, group homes, and foster homes twice a year. However, the scope of required inspections extends far beyond these facilities. And we are falling short of our obligations with the state of North Carolina, so we're electing to add this additional position plus, you know, we'll be hiring some part-time positions to help us catch up on these inspections. It will take several years to work through this process as there is approximately over fifteen hundred businesses in Wayne County that need to be inspected.
Some of them are annual, some of them are every two, and some of them are every three, if you're correct.
My understanding is that the guidelines for this is, is going to change in January. You know anything about that?
No, sir. All I know is while we've been written up by the State Fire Marshal's office and we were requested and required to give them a game plan and how we're to address it, this is how we answered.
Alright, this position, Assistant Fire Marshal, uh, he will work under the Fire Marshal, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I had heard difference, but okay. We'll have some further discussion on this before we act on it. I mean, we can go ahead and do the budget amendment. I don't have a problem with it, but we're going, we're going to have some further discussion on it.
Yeah. If you'd like, I mean, you're talking in private or in public meeting, because if you would like it removed from the consent, we can remove it from consent, discuss it in an open meeting.
And I'm all in for the position. Now, don't get me wrong, but I just, I did, there just some things I want clarified. I mean, you can talk and, you know, then we can bring it back to the, to the open meeting. I mean, I've got, I've got nothing that I'm trying to hide. I just, I just want some questions answered.
Alright. Okay. You as Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, here's the budget ordinance that Angie spoke of.
Okay. Angie, you want to go through that?
This is the grant project ordinance, just to keep, just to keep us in compliance with ARP reporting. This is adding the additional, uh, two budget amendments that were brought before the board today as well as at the last meeting where we added a EMS ambulance.
Any questions, comments, other than thinking?
Chip, do you know where we stand on the new amelances? What, in twenty twenty-seven or late twenty-six?
Um, I do not know. I was going to look and see if Dave was here. Um, I think we're expecting some this spring. I'm not sure how many. I think two.
Two is what we're.
We've got, we've got some amelances getting in pretty bad shape.
Absolutely.
Maybe, though.
But, I mean, we've got a bunch ordered. They're just.
I understand. I just didn't know what the timeframe was.
I think two or three this spring.
Well, that'll, that'll help out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, moving on to, uh, number fifteen, motion to approve the preliminary plat for Franklin Landing subdivision. Mr. Berry? How are you this morning?
Good morning. Franklin Landing is a preliminary plat, so preliminaries are the first of the process for subdivision. So there's no improvements on the ground. You will see this again as a final plat, possibly in phases.
Better get it up screen. Okay.
This is, uh, there are fifty-seven lots on eighty-one acres. This is off on Pipe for Princeton Road between Garley Dairy and Caps Bridge. It's on the north side of Pipe for Princeton. The average lot size is around forty-one thousand square feet, so just under an acre is the average lot size. That area in the very back, those are wet areas, so they're just designated that kind of as open space that the HOA will, will keep. And the planning board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
That's off of Pipe for Princeton Road?
It is. Yes, sir.
It's on the right side, just past.
Okay, I see. We've got a cul-de-sac and then we've got a stub out. Couldn't there be a cul-de-sac on that one?
Yeah, they're going to do a temporary turnaround at the end of that.
It shows it on the thing right there.
Yeah, when the final plat comes in, they'll be required to put that in.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Alright, moving on, number sixteen, motion to approve the preliminary plat for Riley Cross and subdivision.
Alright, yes, and as with the first, this is a preliminary plat as well, so the beginning of the process. So you will see this one again as a final plat. There are fifty-one lots on forty-five acres with this subdivision. This is on Emmett Church Road, just south of Outlaw Road. If you're familiar with where Robin Lakes is, it's actually not far from Robin Lakes. Um, this is, they have about seven tenths of an acre lot size. The average lot size was about thirty thousand square feet in size. The planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval.
Any questions?
What is that? Is that a ditch that goes through the center of that?
Yes, that's a drainage ditch through the center. Yep.
Is it blue line?
It is not a blue line. Yes, sir.
How many houses you stated that was going to be again?
This one will have fifty-one.
Well, looking at lot fourteen, it looks like the ditch, it cuts right across the lot. That's, that's not an issue?
No, there should, there will be enough room on, um, one side of that for the home and septic and all.
Well, it is one point seven two acres. I see that now.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, sir. Uh, staff, uh, next we'll go to establish a board of adjustment public hearing on December the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, nine thirty for a special use permit request, request, uh, requested by Nita Rousht to establish a childcare center at thirty-seven fifty South US one seventeen alternate. Alright?
Yeah. Yeah, this is just a request for a hearing, um, for December meeting, the second meeting in December. Um, it's in the RA twenty district, uh, which, and there's a house on this property. She wants to convert into a daycare center or a childcare center. Because it's in the RA twenty, it does require that it come through as a special use before the Board of Adjustment. So you'll sit as the Board of Adjustment during that meeting for that special use. It is right across from, uh, Broadden Middle School. I see you're familiar with the area right there on one seventeen. Um, and we have sent this to planning board and they do recommend approval of this as well. But again, we're just asking at this point, that you hold a hearing and we'll advertise it, we'll post the sign at the property and send notices to the adjacent property owners.
DOT got any concerns or?
They have reviewed it and they're just requesting that they do, um, for their driveways, a paved apron, you know, just up at the road. A lot of times when you have gravel or, or non-paved driveways, they'll want that paved apron for a certain distance just to cut down on the gravel and, and so forth, pulling in and out.
So traffic's not an issue with being across from street traffic. That'll work. Any questions? Alright. Thank you, sir. Next we go to motion to approve the lease agreement for Rosewood Middle School between Wayne County and the Wayne County Board of Education. Mr. Andrew Newell.
Good morning.
Morning.
If you recall, a couple of months ago, um, we passed a funding agreement with Wayne County, with the Board of Education for the renovation of Rosewood Middle School. That funding agreement, um, said that the Wayne County Public Schools would deed the property over to us during construction and for the duration of any loans if we were to have to finance. Um, and in return, we would lease that back to them for the life of the loan as long as was necessary. So that's what's in front of you today. Um, Wayne County Public Schools approved the deed and the lease at their November meeting. And we have that deed right now. Um, and again, this would be used for collateral in the event that we did have to go out for borrowing. We're not at that point yet. We're just on the demolition side. We don't have that GMP for construction. So we, we don't know that, that financing, I wouldn't say it's, it's, it's not up in the air. It just has not been finalized because we don't have the final numbers. So, this is the same arrangement that we've used for Meadow Lane and also for Fremont. Very similar situation.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would, I wonder whether or not we could possibly get a little update from Dr. Harold, since he's sitting in the audience there of where we stand on Rosewood. Could we, could we do that?
Yes, sir. I was gonna ask him a question, so he can come up and get through and I'll ask a question.
Well, I see you sitting there.
I knew if I come, people would ask me questions, but thank you very much. Uh, just thank you for the opportunity to address the, uh, commission board. So we're moving along with Rosewood Middle. If you, uh, go by the site, you will probably notice that yesterday the fencing began to be, uh, put up by Daniels and Daniels and the abatement of the, uh, asbestos or any hazardous material within that property has begun. We're anticipating that take two to three weeks. So when that, uh, process is over, you will begin to see the building, uh, begin to go down, which will be sometime either before our Thanksgiving holidays or after it, depending on how close we get to Thanksgiving holidays. We don't want to start taking the building down and leaving unsecured buildings, so to speak, with that. So that started, all of our students are, of course, now out of, uh, those buildings that are going to be demoed and have been, uh, relocated into our mobile village we call out back. Uh, we're still doing a little work on the office areas, but, uh, we're, we're moving forward. Uh, the plans themselves are somewhere around the eighty to ninety percent complete stage, so we're looking forward to the opportunity to begin to uh, look at putting that out for bid. We have started having our owner-architect meetings. We've had two of those now, uh, as we're refining that process, so, so we're excited. You should see some progress begin, um, there, starting right away. So we've also uh, done some things to try and help, uh, work with the community. Our board has surplus a few items to remove from the property to use, uh, in the new school construction. If you ride by that school, uh, you'll see the uncovered sign that says Rosewood High School that was installed in the nineteen twenties, so we're saving that. We're saving flooring from the building. We're, we're saving all kinds of things that we can potentially reuse in the construction of the new building, you know, as a, a gesture to the community, because we know the community, uh, is very invested in that school, uh, and, and would like to see it. We've done walkthroughs of the building for the community. The administration has done that, so they can see it before it goes down. Uh, we're saving bricks. We've done a lot. Uh, and again, thank you, uh, to the commission board for everything you've done to support, uh, the process and all of your, your help, uh, because you've been very helpful, of course, as we've worked together to try and get this project going. So, so we're excited to see that. But I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Yeah. Uh, have you, um, we've walked through the gym here a couple of months ago. Uh, has gotten any, any update on that far as what the last, the discussion we had about the bleachers and the floor?
The last, the last update was, you know, we're talking with you, was looking at what a cost would be if we wanted to do an update to the gym that was outside of what the working group agreed upon, right? The working group agreed upon just basically giving the gym a facelift when it comes to, uh, what's on the inside and then any electrical work that has to be done to bring that building up to codes since it's from the fifties. At this point, you're looking at somewhere around an additional half a million dollars. If you would like to replace the bleachers and do any repair work to the floor. Where we are in the design phase, we want to, um, not have to go through a change request when it comes to the architect, which would incorporate any additional fees that they might would have to redesign something. So I would suggest that if there is potential discussion about, um, wanting to do a little bit more to look at an allowance within the project, because that would not require any changes from the architect in that contract we have with them.
And that's when we walked through the floor, the juts and, uh, there's a lot of floor that's damaged or that has been repaired, you just as a temporary repair, because we think some of that's gonna uh, with the construction, should eliminate the water intrusion, I guess you'd say. Now, the electrical, um, the electrical in the back part of that building was included in the.
Yes, sir. Yes, all the back part. The, the main building, as you know, the gym since its nineteen fifties, we still turn the lights on with breakers.
Well, that was, that was the, that was the, the safety issue that I was, and I think Jason was worried about as well, so.
Yes, so currently within the project, that will be recommended or brought into code, so our employees will actually have a light switch to flip on the lights instead of, you know, how the gyms were when they were built in the fifties, you were flipping on breakers.
Well, I guess we just kind of need to see where the money is when we can just kind of go from there. Okay? Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see where we at. A motion to approve, uh, award of ice machine maintenance contract.
Good morning.
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 Um, we, uh, Mandy put out a RFQ for some, you know, to, uh, get someone to look at our ice machines. We, we've got probably thirty ice machines in the county. Um, we've got one HVAC guy that's just staying as busy as he can be on, on heat and air units, so we said this is pretty much considered a food service because you, you know, people obviously consume ice, so we, we wanted them taken care of a little bit better than what we're able to do it now. Um. Perry Shaw here locally, anytime we have a issue with one that we can't fix, we, we've always called him, but we're, we're spending a lot of money on repairs to these ice machines and we decided that we, we needed to be under some kind of contract with someone, so we, we went out for bid on this. Um, I guess y'all have, yeah, y'all have the bid tabs there with you. Um, the low bidder by a couple of hundred dollars was NIS, and I'm ashamed to say I don't know who NIS is, but I do know they're in Charleston, South Carolina. And, um, when we saw that they were the low bidder, I said, well, let's first, first of all, find out where they're coming from and, and they're, they said their service tech, anytime we called them, would be coming from Charleston, South Carolina. So, um, we, we decided for a couple of hundred dollar difference, EnviroTroll, which was the next lowest bidder, um, they've got offices in, um, Wilmington and Raleigh, so that would be a lot closer. Um, Perry Shaw was the closest one to us, but was the highest bidder, so um, we, we couldn't even take that into consideration. ACI, the, the third highest bidder, they're the one that has our, um, HVAC contract right now. Um, but, but like I said, looking at the numbers, they were, they were quite a bit higher. So we just figured just the sheer distance and the time it would take us if I had something that had to be fixed when an ice machine wouldn't have to be nothing in emergency, but I'm four hours away from getting somebody here to work on it, so we just decided, uh, um, we, I mean, she called and I told her, you know, explained that to them and they understood that as well, but EnviroTroll was the, was the next lowest bidder, so we decided to go with them.
Unless it's the Maxwell Center and they got an event.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's right.
All right, any questions, ma'am?
The, the hour rate, does that include the travel time too? Like if they're four hours away, you know, would that?
Um, travel time, they've got a number over to the right, uh, for travel, uh, for just a flat rate for travel, but we, we found that that, that might be a flat rate, but you, you still pay for time. E- even though, you know what I'm saying? They, they show a flat rate, but that's just for them to bring their truck and their tools to come, so yeah, they would be charging us going and coming.
So they could not be the cheapest.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's exactly right. If you look at it from that angle, it was nowhere near the cheapest, but if you look at numbers, a couple of things, they look like they're cheapest, but that's why we wanted to explain that to you as well, make you understand what, what we were looking at, so.
Any other questions? So we are, you recommended EnviroTroll, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
We've got how many ice machines?
There's close to thirty. There's a bunch of. Then we're putting in a couple of more as we speak, so the new, two new buildings, so.
All right.
A lot of.
And they include those, correct?
No.
They do not.
Those will be under warranty for a year, but after that, we'll add them to it. But we are taking some out of the old DSS, so and one out of the old jail, so it'll, it'll wash.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir.
Sure, thank you.
All right, motion to approve reorganized, reorganized and updated pay plan. Sarah.
Sarah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a update from the one that you guys have in front of you. Am I good to pass that out? Thank you. Um, there were two changes that were discovered after I, I made the initial, um, update. Um, but basically what, what we're looking at is due to all the, the changes that were made, um, from the pay study, um, which were elected to become official in December. We needed to go ahead and update our pay plan to reflect all the changes necessary, um, which were new grades, new title names, and increase in start rates. So that just basically moved our entire pay plan and it just needed to be cleaned up, so that's what we're presenting to you today.
So these are the salaries, new salaries affected December the first that we've already agreed to. It's just updating the pay plan.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any. You want to point them to any specific ones or is it just?
It's, it's, the whole thing is new, so we had a two percent, uh, COLA, which kind of changed our numbers. Um, anything that is highlighted, you're gonna see is, there's been some kind of change. Either it moved a grade based on the pay plan or the title was updated. Um, but there's nothing on here that's new besides the assistant fire marshal. Um, that's the only thing that's brand new on here. Everything else has already been approved and already looked at during the budget process.
Well, the good news is, nothing's in red.
That's right.
It's in black and white is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's the the bold.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions?
I don't, I don't know. I was scrolling down in it. Here, where's it? It's got call take a foreign language interpreter. What's the, I don't see a figure on that.
It should be above.
Above?
Yes, sir.
Right there.
Okay, all right. Okay, I see it. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Any questions for me?
Questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to the motion to approve an easement across a portion of the Wayne County Executive Jetport to Larry and Levina Perry for a period of ten years. Andrew?
Hello again. Um, so Mr. Perry, uh, uh, owns two parcels, um, that are joined the, um, jetport. Um, occasionally throughout the year, he owns cattle and it's such that he needs to cross over jetport property in order to get his cattle from one side to the other. I think he does work with the cattle in one, so it's not a constant back and forth. It's just a few times.
Move them so they don't tur, they don't eat all the grass.
Right. Um, and so if you can, let's see.
I'm gonna get the different map.
Okay, yeah.
I think I've got the wrong map there, so.
Yeah, there's a, a map that'll show you exactly what's going on, so, um, there's a portion of property, there's about fifteen feet between our property line and our fence. And so what, um, we're gonna grant him an easement on that fifteen feet. Eight feet in, he's gonna install an electric fence and he'll be responsible for maintenance on that side and he won't be allowed to go on the other side. Um, so this, this easement is good for ten years, um, and it does require him to, um, fix any damage that may occur that his cattle, um, uh, does, that, that, any damage to our fence or our property.
Any questions?
This is in combination with an easement that he gave the jetport as well. Is that correct?
He, he is. There, there's a, a temporary construction easement, um, on a property that's to the south of it. He gave us a temporary construction easement so we can, uh, work on our stormwater improvement on the south side of the jetport right there.
One that comes off of Combs Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Andrew. Uh, then next, oh, you do, a motion to adopt resolution twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-nine. Resolution establishes policy to prohibit viewing of pornography on county networks and devices as required by session law twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six. NCGS one forty-three dash eight oh five, and make sure your first sentence is that we already have a policy.
We, we do. That's the first thing I was gonna say. Uh, so we do have an acceptable use policy that applies to all county employees. Um, and it prohibits any employees from using the county network, from viewing, storing, or transmitting illicit materials. So we do already have a policy in place. Um, in June of this past year, the General Assembly uh, passed session law twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six. It's a hu- human trafficking bill, has various provisions about human trafficking. Um, one small section of that, section seven created, um, uh, a new general statute, one forty-three dash eight oh five, which established a pro- prohibition against viewing pornography on government networks and devices. It requires all local governments to enact a very specific policy, so over and above what we already have in place, and it has some specific provisions. Um, first, it bans the viewing of pornography on county networks and devices. Specifically bans employees, elected officials, and appointees from viewing pornography on county networks and devices. Um, outlines disciplinary actions that will be taken in response to the violation of policy. And it also requires the IT director to report to the state any instances of viewing that would, that occur throughout the year on our network. So while, while we already have a policy in place, we needed to pass this to be in compliance. Um, there is a resolution, uh, that, uh, enacts that policy and this policy does not apply to law enforcement, um, because oftentimes law enforcement needs to investigate, you know, um, human trafficking, sex crimes, things of that nature, so obviously they would be exempt as long as they were performing their law enforcement activities.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, leaving on number twenty-three, motion to approve Wayne County travel reimbursement policy.
This is an update. We had a, uh, reimbursement policy. Um, when I updated the entire, um, new policy, we had to remove any extras that were in there that weren't specifically personnel-related. So what I wanted to do was update that policy, which I had done, and then, um, add it and publish it as an addendum to the personnel policy. So we have that in front of you for your, um, approval. There were some changes that needed to be made. Um, notably, you'll see that the federal rates, because it had been so old, the federal rates had increased, so I increased those to match what the federal rates are for reimbursement.
Can you scroll up on that, Carol, so we can see the whole thing? So that highlighted in yellow is the only change?
That's the only material change, yes, besides the, um, the reimbursement.
Rates.
Rates.
Yeah.
It also formalizes the, uh, request for outstate travel to be approved by county management.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
That's for all.
For everybody.
Everybody, including us.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I didn't want to go in here.
No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, here we are. Uh, twenty-four, motion to approve the resolution of tentative award of Wayne Executive Jetport Parking Lot Drainage Improvement Project to Allen Gray Company Incorporated, hundred percent funded by state ARP A funds. Motion to approve WK Dixon's work authorization number thirteen for construction administration services for the parking lot drainage improvement project. Hundred percent funded by state ARPA funds. And motion to approve WK Dixon's work authorization number twelve for construction administration services for the corporate access road portion of the recently approved stormwater improvement project WA number thirteen, FAA award letter attached, ninety percent funded by FAA grant funds with a ten percent match, which is thirteen thousand, seven twenty-seven, provided by the county of Wayne with appropriate budget amendment.
Just as you read.
Pretty much as I read, yeah. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to new business, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the Wayne County ABC Board to set aside a portion of gross receipts for capital improvements. And I don't think that's been updated since two thousand and twelve, I think it is.
That's correct.
You got it before you, uh, which is want to, uh, move that, uh, that funding, uh, authorized at two hundred and twenty thousand up to a million. Which will accommodate their construction portion of their construction needs in the near future. Any questions? All right, any questions? You're looking. All right, motion, uh, moving on to number twenty-six, motion to approve contract for regional upyored resource asset mapping project.
And I can go over that during, during the meeting.
Okay. Uh, twenty-seven, motion to adopt a resolution awarding upyored settlement funds to the Eastern Carolina Council with appro, with appropriate budget amendment.
That's for the same property.
All right. Then we have public comments and we got the thing out there, right? The sign-up sheet.
Yes, sir, it is outside.
All right, uh, then county manager report, more commissioner committee reports. Do we have any closed session?
Yes.
We got, uh, ten minutes. We got time to do it?
Yes.
All right, may I, may I should go on closed session?
Motion to go in closed session.
All right, uh, can we vote or we got to vote by hand or?
Hold on, it should go.
Concerning a business in Wayne County.
Yes, sir.
Possible business.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Get animals. Get down with us.
November nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting to order. Commissioner Foster is unable to be with us this morning, so I'll have the invocation. Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for bringing us together this morning. We ask that you give us the wisdom and knowledge to make the best decisions for those that are affected. We want to send our condolences out to Julie Graham on the loss of her father, Antonio Williams on the loss of an aunt, any of those that have illnesses during this season. We ask that in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Foster.
Goodbye. It's behind you. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Okay, before we start, we have an issue, medical issue. Dave's at the back, see him. We have an issue, had to clear the building. From here to my left, I go with Carol out this side. Here to your right, I go with me out this side. And then Chip and I will clear the building. All right, I entertain a mo- let's see, we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Just one, under special presentations, we'll remove item number four.
Okay.
The hero spotlight award to a future date.
All righty.
Scheduling complete.
Have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, please cast your vote. Let's see if it can come up. All right, got it. Okay, moving on to entertain a motion to approve the October fifteenth minutes.
So approved.
Have a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. All right, thank you. Our special presentations, our presentation applied to Commissioner Freeman Hardison, Jr. Commissioner Hardison, if you would lead me down at the podium. We have a plaque, and it says, presented to Freeman Hardison, Jr. appreciation of your four years of service as citizens of Wayne County as District, as Commissioner of District Four, December twenty twenty to December twenty twenty four, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. And I want to tell you, thank you for your service, not just to the citizens of District Four. And I'll tell you what I admire most about you. You have, you have not let partisanship make your decisions. You've not let people just in your district tell you how to vote. You voted what you done did, no matter how it went. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Folks, I appreciate this, I really do. You know, so I'm gonna be honest with you, sometimes I come in here and it's like herd and cattle, to get everybody on the same page, and we always miss one or two. Basically, my honor to serve District Four, my honor to serve with you individuals. Each and every one of you have your own plans for Wayne County. But what is special about this group is, at the end of the day, we all come together for the good of Wayne County and its citizens. And you can't ask for any more than that. And the Chip and his staff, Junior, Gordon, Andrew, you guys, listen to these folks. They're your management team, listen to them. They're good people, you know, and just move the county forward. And I commend you for what you're doing, the ideas that have become before this board. Some of the votes have been tough, some of my kind of, in hindsight, I never really regret voting because I voted with my, with the best intention. And Commissioner Eli, Harold, you got a good manager coming on this team. So use him and move forward. Commissioner? You and I have not, haven't seen our item seven without him, but at the end of the day, we've come together for Wayne County.
And you're not going anywhere, you're still serving Wayne County on several boards, and we appreciate your willingness to keep serving.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is it okay for a grown man to have a little teardrop?
Yes, sir.
You know, because, you know, we're all like family here, you know. We, you know, we go through ups and downs and, you know, we work together, you know. And so he's gonna be missed, you're gonna be missed, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm only a phone call away, even though I can't vote.
I got you, don't.
All right, we'll move on to number five that's on your agenda. Motion to approve the twenty twenty four National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County proclamation. May I ask?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. I'm Christie, Christie Salz, sorry, I do know my name. I am the Executive Director of Apprenticeships and Career Development over at Wayne Community College. And this morning, I stand before you to ask, here in Wayne County, that we recognize this the third week of November as National Apprenticeship Week. Ten years ago, the U.S. Department of Labor set aside this week to recognize and promote the work of apprenticeships. This year makes six years since Wayne Community College has a registered apprenticeship program. In twenty nineteen, we began one program with four students and one employer partner. Today, we serve over a hundred and fifty apprentices with over twenty employer partners here in Wayne County and the surrounding area. We have apprenticeship programs that are degree completing and also short-term training. Along with reading this proclamation this morning, I would like to recognize the two young men standing here with me. Both of them, in May of twenty twenty five, will join the ranks of journeymen as they will complete their Associate of Applied Technology Industrial Systems Degree from Wayne Community College. I have Alex Acock, who is actually part of Wayne County Government. He works with Mr. Kendall Lee. And I also have Brandon Roa, who is with Waukesha GE Pro-Lite, who will be graduating. So far, we have graduated out about twenty apprentices in our applied tech program, and will continue to add to that number in years to come. So, without further ado, I would like to read this proclamation to you. Twenty twenty four National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County proclamation. Whereas, National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its tenth anniversary by raising awareness of the vital role of registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn and preparing a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers in Wayne County and across the nation. And whereas, registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And where, at, and whereas, Wayne County recognizes the role of registered apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. And whereas, Wayne County recognizes that registered apprenticeship, a proven industry-driven training model, is a key strategy in improving job quality and creating success to good-paying, family-sustaining jobs for all, starting with youth and young adults while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care economy issues. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioner does hereby declare November seventeenth, twenty twenty four, through November twenty-third, twenty twenty four, as National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County, North Carolina. Thus, the nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty four.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Entertained a motion to approve the twenty twenty four National Apprenticeship Week in Wayne County.
So moved.
All right, please cast your vote. Any comments?
Yes, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. You know, the proclamation is great. But can you give the audience, and myself, a brief overview of the apprentice, apprentice program? So that any employer that is listening in can understand these benefits?
Sure. The apprenticeship program actually gives students, employees, the opportunity to earn while they learn. So it gives opportunity to, let's say, an incumbent worker who's working, actually, as both of these gentlemen were, they were already working, but they wanted to upskill their skill set, they wanted more training. And so we talked with their employers, and we created a registered apprenticeship program. An apprenticeship program has three components. It has course-related instruction on the job training and a progressive wage scale, which means as their job skills increase, so does their wage skill over the course of the time that they're in the program. The Department of Labor actually determines how long an apprenticeship program has to run, anywhere from one year to four years for them to earn their journeyman certification. These gentlemen are actually in our maintenance technician program, so DOL says it's eight thousand hours or four years to earn their apprenticeship program. So at Wayne, what we have done, we work with employer partners to create what their curriculum needs to look like. In our maintenance program, they have actually taken our associate degree and said this degree is what we feel like they need to be, you know, a good employee, and we can take the training from there. So they actually both have the opportunity to go on to ECU, which we have a program with, to continue their education upon graduation, which we both have had the conversation this morning, that's an ambition and a dream of theirs, but to continue on. So with that, you know, like I said, we're able to look at it. We have a one-day-a-week model, so they come to school on Wednesdays is their day. So they're in class from like nine to four on Wednesdays. And then the other days of the week, their employer is able to work them, their schedule as they need it be. They both work first shift, but we have some apprentices who work second shift, third shift, again, depending on what the need of the employers. That's our maintenance program. We have an electrical program that, as I said, is on the short-term training that is not part of a degree-seeking program. But we use curriculum through NCCER, which is a national recognized credential for electricians. And once they're finished with that program, they will be ready to sit for their state license for electrical apprentices, for electrical. Again, that program meets two nights a week, on Tuesday and Thursday night after they've worked, but it's completely online, everything that they do is virtual. So again, it really depends on what the employer is needing and how we can meet that need. But we're, we try to keep their time on campus limited because we know they're better serving their employer, actually working and getting the on-the-job training, that work-based learning experience. But, you know, there are times that they have to have that, that practical training as well. And the great thing about our program at Wayne, as you know, we have highly qualified instructors who are teaching. There are actually members who have been a part of the workforce at some point in some capacity, imparting their knowledge now on our students.
Again, I don't want to get into too much of the details, but I think it all comes down to the money. Okay? So if I'm an employer, who's going to reimburse me for the time that my employee is over at, taking classes at the college?
Well, that, that can be a loaded question. We actually, there's always different types of funding that's available, on state and federal funding. Actually, right now, at Wayne Community, we have some apprentices that are on, well, actually, these guys are on federal funding. This semester, we received some, some appropriation funding that we've been able to give each apprentice forty percent back on their tuition. So that's, that's, the employer typically picks up the cost of their bill. So I've been able to say this semester, hey, your bill's forty percent less than what it should be because of the funding that we have. There's also been state funding, you probably have heard a lot about. Back in twenty twenty-two, our General Assembly set aside twelve million dollars for our workforce. And that went back to the workforce to help with stipends for mentors. It went to help with wage costs, instructional costs, you know, different things. So that money is running out, we have to have it earmarked by twenty twenty-four. And there was, there were parameters for that funding, and then it has to be completely spent by twenty twenty-six. Both of these gentlemen also started when we had our Duke Energy Grant that we had received back in twenty nineteen, which was a little over two hundred thousand dollars that again, allowed us to be able to say to the employer, you don't have to pay for the tuition, you know? And we often hear from employers, we do not mind paying the wage scale. We've got to pay them, we're gonna have to pay them, no one's gonna come work for free. We know we have to pay them. But if you can help us offset the cost of tuition. And community college tuition is already extremely very reasonable, as we all know. But we also know any little bit that we can give back helps our employers and helps our community as well. So like I said, there's always funding of some sort, it just may look a little different. And also, back in the summer, we had a program called SEED that we created with Smithville Foods. They donated one million dollars to the North Carolina Business Committee for Education, which is out of the governor's office, that we work with high school students, high school juniors and seniors. And we actually had three young men who were hired out of that as youth apprentices. So when an employer hires someone who has just graduated high school within a hundred and twenty days, there's a tuition waiver for them completely that was set aside by the General Assembly back in twenty seventeen. They gave a youth waiver to any youth upon graduation going into a registered apprenticeship program. So there's a lot that we're doing, there's a lot that we're trying to get out there about the message of working with our youth. But also, you know, it's a great way, you have a lot of great workers, like the two standing beside me, who wanted to progress themselves, but maybe didn't know how to leave that job because they need that wage, they have families, they have responsibilities. So again, you know, employers just need to call us and have conversations. We're actually having an event tomorrow where we're bringing the Department of Labor to campus. We're bringing DPI, it's an all-day event for HR people, managers to come out and learn about all the do's and don'ts and how they can become a part of the apprenticeship program. You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to number six. Motion to approve the twenty twenty four Farm City Week proclamation, and it will be presented by our county manager, Chip Crumper, in the absence of Ms. Michelle Mistrada.
We all know how important agriculture is to us, being our number-one economic driver here. So it's with pleasure that I read this twenty twenty-four Farm City Week proclamation. Whereas the growth and development of the county and the well-being of all of its citizens are dependent upon cooperation and exchange between two essential environments of our society, the farm and non-farmly, farm families. And whereas studies show agriculture and agribusiness industries together bring in over one billion of income into this county, which represents twenty-one percent of the county's income and twenty-one percent of the county's employment. Whereas Wayne County's farm income makes a significant contribution to the economy of our county with over four hundred and fifty million in gross farm gate sales during last year. And whereas Wayne County is home to Matt Olive Pickle, the largest pickle company in the United States, home to Goldsboro Milling Company, parent company of Butterball Turkey, the largest producer of turkey products in the United States. Whereas, and we're never, wherever we live on the farm or in the city, we share common needs, food for our nourishment, forest products for our shelter and paper, and fiber for clothing and other materials. And whereas if Wayne County is to continue to prosper, it is important that farm and non-farm residents appreciate and understand each other. And whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November twenty-seventh through December fourth, twenty twenty-four, to be Farm City Week and a week of thankfulness. Adopted this the nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. I entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Farm City Week proclamation.
So moved.
Please cast your vote. Any discussion, comments? All right, thank you, Chip. Moving on to appoint committee, Mr. Hardison.
Would you have an appointment? I'll have Ms. Boeing, if you don't mind, to share.
All right, to begin, we will have the motion to appoint of Mrs. Murphy to the Wayne County ABC Board, replacing Chris King, following his resignation.
Mr. Hardison, you want to make that motion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, please cast your vote. Thank you, sir. Next.
All right, then we have the recommendation. All right, then we have the recommendations that will be voted on in the December, or at the December seventeenth meeting. The first would be reappointing Martha Bryan as Senior Tar Heel legislator and Sue Carter as the alternate, per Services on Aging Director Paula Edwards' recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Harson, go ahead.
The next one would be appointing Jessica Drennan to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, replacing Melissa Reese of Trillium. That is your second recommendation. And the final will be appointing Freeman Hardison and Dr. Joe Demaco to the Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors, replacing Kate Daniels and Dr. Anthony Hamm, whose terms have expired. So that will be on your December seventeenth agenda.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Harson. That's it, correct?
That's it.
Okay, uh, we've got your unfinished business. Motion to approve, motion to adopt the Schedule of Values for the 2025 reappraisal of real property in Wayne County.
So moved.
All right. Uh, please cast your vote. All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to number nine. Motion to adopt the Farm Use Schedule of Values for the 2025 reappraisal of values in Wayne County.
So moved.
Please cast your vote. Okay, the... All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Oh, please cast your vote. Okay, uh, moving on to new business. A motion to adopt Resolution 2024 dash twenty-seven. A resolution authorized the Wayne County ABC Board to set aside a portion of grocery receipts for capital improvements. Entertaining a motion?
So moved.
Uh, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think that we had someone that wanted to...
Well, he just, he was just going, if we got any questions, he's gonna answer them after the fact.
All right, so moving a little bit. He was getting nervous that we were gonna say...
Yeah, don't shuffle your feet before we vote. All right, this passed unanimous. Do you want to come and speak?
Just want to say thank you.
Come up here to, come up here to the mic and say thank you. We're giving you a hard time on this.
You are, y'all are giving you a hard time. I do, I do want to say thank you to, to the commissioners for doing this because how it came up, uh, there had not been a resolution since 2012. As we were doing the records and did last year's audit, which the commission sent down to me and said we had a very good audit, except I need to look back to 2012. We'd already looked there. So this is bringing us up to standards, and we are continuing on with the improvement in the system. Uh, we're building an expansion, which I hope is going to increase our county revenues going forward. That's our goal. And so I, I thank you again. And if you got any questions, feel free to come by the office and open the office up to, to y'all to come visit and, and see what's going on. Again, thank you.
I just have one comment. Thank you for everything you're doing over there. You know, you stepped in, you really put your thumb on the scales and make sure everything is running correctly, as it should be. And I really appreciate that.
And I couldn't do it without y'all's support. I do want you to know that. Without y'all's support, it couldn't be done.
He's got a background in his circumstances.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. All right, motion to approve a contract for a regional opioid resource asset mapping project.
Okay. This is a project that came to us, uh, as part of our opioid, uh, uh, funding. Um, and it came to us through our council of governments in trying to determine what types of programs that we distribute funding to. Sometimes a lot of what you know is only what is in your county. You're not aware of other opioid treatment programs in other counties and what resources are available in other counties. This project would be a, uh, group project with our council of governments to map all of the counties and the resources within those counties to show us and give us, uh, some background material on what treatment programs or resources are in these other counties. And, and we have that, not, so that we would have that knowledge base when we make the decisions to distribute opioid funding on a yearly basis. And so I ask that we, uh, it's just, it's a shared cost, uh, based upon, um, population. And, uh, I think it's in your contract. I think our mapping cost is about fourteen thousand dollars is our share of it. This would be paid out of our opioid funds. Uh, and this is a one-time project, so there is a little bit of management money that the COG will charge. I'm not sure exactly, it's just a s- small amount. Uh, and I would recommend that we, you know, move forward with this so that we can have this asset. Um, also, under item number twenty-seven, it's, uh, would be the motion to award and adopt that resolution for those funds to, to Eastern Carolina Council, uh, with an appropriate budget amendment. So you need to vote on each of those items individually. One is the contract for the map, mapping to take place. When you get this signed, when we get this signed, we'll forward it back to the COG. All the counties have to sign their contract, and, uh, it'll be processed, and that project will begin. And then at number twenty-seven, we'll allocate the opioid monies locally that is our share. Now, have any questions on that?
So the budget amendment is actually for expenditure of opioid dollars, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract for a regional opioid resource asset mapping project. Have a motion going forward, please vote. Thank you, sir. All right, entertain a motion to adopt a resolution award of opioid settlement funds to Eastern Carolina Council with appropriate budget amendment.
So moved.
Have a vote, chair.
With an appropriate budget amendment?
That's what I said, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, girl, the public comments, we have anybody sign up?
We do, we have one individual, uh, Constance Corn.
All right, let's call them. Go forward.
Good morning, county commissioners and Wayne County. This morning, I'm here to thank the twenty-plus-thousand individuals who voted me back into office to serve as, uh, who voted me, uh, the opportunity to get back into office. Unfortunately, it did not transpire. I did, in fact, enter this office trying to take the Register of D's to the twenty-first century. And my efforts have been successful. Um, as I call your name, please, would you please stand? I've diversified the office. Um, elder, uh, Deputy Kedrick Elderman, Asian. Uh, Deputy Travis Lucas, veteran. Deputy, and, um, Anthony Padilla, veteran. Assistant ROD is Deputy Rodney Perry. He's out sick this morning. Uh, Deputy, uh, Delia Ramirez. Deputy, uh, Sharon Langford. As I've said, I've tried to make the, uh, office look like the county. I've implemented a customer-based, um, employee appreciation program. I've updated the ROD website. The website includes the history of the county, which is, um, which ha- has been spoken by, um, GK, Congressman GK Butterfield in his last visit here to Wayne County. I've joined forces with the clerk of courts, the, uh, family court for the past two years, filling the paramount. In addition, I have placed, um, soup, nabs, oatmeal, candy, and other helpful things because I've discovered one of our work for, uh, the census that this county is destitute. I've combined with the, uh, Veterans Department to smooth the DD two fourteen processes. I've developed a new system to aid with the backlog of the death certificates, providing faster service to the, uh, funeral homes. I fully preserved and restored four birth books dating back to nineteen fifteen. I've bound and restored seventeen marriage, um, indexes from eighteen sixty-one through nineteen thirty-six. I've bound two highway right-of-way plan books, twenty-two deed books from seventeen oh five through nineteen fifty-eight, eleven registered daily registers from nineteen, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. Um, I've spent over a hundred thousand dollars in the preservation and the restoring of records. Staff and I received certification in September of 2024. I was inducted into the Wall of First in April of 2024 as the first person of color to ever hold this position. Uh, on Friday, um, uh, twelve-five-twenty-four, we will get a new vendor in that will allow not only county to county, state to state, but if you are a veteran out of country and you live here in Wayne County, you will be able to get, um, records from, um, from, um, from our office. It has truly been an honor and a pleasure, pleasure to serve this county. On Wednesday, November twenty-seventh, I will be hosting an, um, exiting celebration. We're asking all who are interested to stop by for final farewells. Again, I'd like to thank all the citizens of Wayne County who believed in me and, and trusted that I would indeed do a good job. I, I supported my effort in, in taking the Register of D's to the twenty-first century. I'm very proud of that record. No one can take away from that record. And I just ask that the next registrar who comes in not try to destroy or undo what I've done, but to proceed forward. There's much work to be done. There's a lot of damage in those books, and we need the, those books restored. I thank you again, Wayne County, for your trust in me. And I look forward to seeing you on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, to say my farewells. Great day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Boyd, we have any more?
No, sir.
All right. Uh, moving on, county manager report?
Yes, sir, I have just a few things. Uh, kudos to Wayne Community College for their apprenticeship program. I think that's a great program, uh, not only for, uh, employers, but employees and, and young people today coming up. Not everybody comes out of high school knowing what they want to do or their, what job track they want to take. And I think that's a great opportunity for them to go out and learn valuable skills and have a job at the same time and, you know, start that portion of their life. It's, I think it's a great program. And congratulations to Alex, who has, uh, done well with it. And I always urge him to continue his education. And I'm going on the record here for pushing for him to go get his bachelor's degree. Uh, because that only helps us when we have a more educated workforce. That goes not only for Wayne County, but all of, all of Wayne County and the, and the youth in Wayne County. Um, also, I'd like to also, uh, congratulate, uh, Commissioner Harson on his term here and his service in this county. And, uh, I enjoyed working with you. It was always a pleasure. Thank you, sir. And that's the only comments I have.
All right, uh, Mr., or Commissioner Williams?
Thank you. I want to thank you, Chris, for acknowledging the loss of my family member. I really appreciate that. She was the elder of the family, and she's gonna be missed. I want to thank all of Wayne County for, um, re-electing me. I'm deeply honored and humbled to stand before you today as your re-elected Wayne County Commissioner. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the residents of Wayne County, especially those in District Two, for placing your trust in me once again. Your support inspires me to continue working tirelessly to make our community a better place for all. Before I go any further, I want to take a moment to acknowledge my opponent, Steve Wiggins. While we may have been on a diff- a different side during the election, I greatly respect his commitment to this community, and I was saddened to hear about his recent health concerns. And I send my prayers and best wishes for his speedy recovery. Steve, please know that you are in my prayers. As I reflect on the work we've done together over the years, I am excited to continue advocating for the projects that matter most to our community. Initiatives like our Summer Youth Employment Program have provided valuable opportunities for our young people to gain skills and experiences that will shape their futures. I remain dedicated to expanding this program and ensuring it reaches even more youth in the coming years. I am also deeply committed to seeing the completion of the digital library for District Two, which will offer our residents greater access to knowledge, resources, and connectivity. These tools are essential for personal growth, education, and economic opportunity, and I will work diligently to bring this project to life. Additionally, I am focused on the successful completion of several other projects I've championed, projects designated to improve infrastructure, enhance public services, and strengthen our community's resilience. These efforts are more than plans, they are promises to you, the people of District Two. And I am determined to deliver on them. To my family, friends, campaign team, and all the volunteers who stood by my side, I cannot thank you enough for your unwavering support and dedication to my colleagues and county staff. I look forward to continuing our work together to tackle challenges and seize opportunities. This reelection is not just about me, it's about us, about our shared vision for Wayne County, and about ensuring a brighter, more prosperous future for everyone in our community. I am excited for what lies ahead and committed to leading with transparency, accountability, and heart. Thank you again for this incredible honor. Let's keep building on our progress and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dogger? First, I want to call out Commissioner Harson. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, elections do have consequences. But that said, uh, you've been a valuable asset to our, our board and to the county, and you've advocated for your district. Uh, I remember the tough times we went through in regards to discussions, uh, over the EMS in Grantham. And that was a long process, and you were steadfast in your zeal for your community. And I, uh, I appreciate, uh, working with you.
Thank you.
And Thanksgiving is coming up next week, and I'm excited about it. I always love Thanksgiving because it's a time for us to reflect on the great gifts that we've had from our Lord and Savior. And we have family and friends come in and enjoy our bounty, and we hope everybody eats a lot of turkey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, Commissioner Wayne Acott?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I want to, uh, thank the citizens of Wayne County. Even though I was unopposed, it was very humbling to, uh, see the numbers that came in that voted for me, even though I didn't have, uh, any opposition. It's, uh, sometimes it's very humbling to sit on this board anyhow. I know, you know, we have differences of opinion sometime, but, uh, we, we always come to a, to a, a answer at the end that benefits the citizens of Wayne County. And, and some of y'all know I've had some health issues, and I just, you just don't know how much I appreciate the prayers that everyone has sent to me. Uh, I am doing better, but, uh, uh, again, just, uh, it's an honor and a privilege to sit on this board. I, I really had no intentions on running again, but, uh, everywhere I went, people kept encouraging me to do it. And, uh, I was lucky enough to not have an opponent, so I didn't have to get out. Uh, I did put up one campaign sign, but, uh, it's, it's, like I say, it's very humbling to sit on this board and, and represent the citizens of Wayne County. And also, I want to thank Commissioner Harson for what he has done for the county of Wayne. Uh, he's, uh, he's worked hard for his district and for the whole county. And, uh, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, sir. And, um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Miss, uh, Commissioner Barbara Acott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also like the rest of them, I would like to thank my district as well for, you know, I was unopposed as well. But that don't take away from the fact that, um, you know, it's, you still reach out to the people, even though it would be just easy not to. And getting out and meeting and reassuring people and the faith that they have in me. And I also look forward to working with the staff... And I also look forward to working with the staff again for four more years. And also the county manager chip, thank you for all you've done. And Ginger and Carol and Kayla, I mean, y'all have been a big support to me on the board and everything, and I really appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Williams, I pray for you and your family during the holidays and everything.
Thank you so much.
And have a safe trip to Washington.
Thank you so much.
Uh, and also for Gila Graham and her family. It's, it's a hard time when you lose someone and, and especially during the holidays because that person will be missed. Mr. Harson, Commissioner Harson?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you for your friendship. You have been there many times for me, especially during the death of my husband with kind words. And I always would call on me to check on me to see how I was doing. And to me, that is a true friendship. And I will continue our friendship. And I've got your telephone number. I will be calling.
I'm sure you use it.
And, uh, I would like to also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and moving forward and look forward to the new year. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Commissioner Harson?
First of all, I'd offer my condolences to Commissioner Williams and his family.
Thank you, sir.
And into the, my constituents in District Four. Uh, I've enjoyed serving for, serving for the last four and a half years as your commissioner. I've had some hard times and hard decisions we had to make, but we made them and we're moving forward. And all I can say is you're in good hands with, with Commissioner-elect, uh, Harold. Good man. Like I told him earlier, if he'd have told me he was gonna run against me, I probably wouldn't have ran. But you're in good hands. And as Commissioner A. Cox said, Chip, Steph, Carol, Ginger, Andrew, Gordon, Chair, I'm not, not that you're in his, his staff, but Chair, and also Dave. Dave, Dave, I'm having a, a senior moment today. If you haven't noticed, so keep an eye on me. It's been a joy working with you guys, you know, hearing your concerns, helping you where I could help, and I will continue to do so as a private citizens, but just keep, you have my number. You, use it. And also to each and every board member, you know, we have each had our ups and downs, but it's been a joy working with you. You know, seeing the different personalities, you know, I always said I once worked in India for around six months. And when you're talking to some folks, they would take their head yes and then do that side opposite. And sometimes it seemed like I was in the, within India again with, with some of you guys. But at the end of the day, I've enjoyed, enjoyed you, you know, I've, I've really, you know, I'm leaving feeling good. We've accomplished something. I see the vision that each and every one of you have for the county, what you're into. Ms. A. Cox, you brought sewer to the attention of this board, which I don't think it had been addressed for the last twenty years. Commissioner, Commissioner Gurley, you brought regional sewer to the board. And Commissioner A. Cox, Wayne A. Cox, you've been a, been a mentor and a much-needed presence here. And Joe, what can I say about Joe? Sometimes I wish I could just get inside his mind, see how it works. Especially see how the dollar signs equate there. And, and Commissioner Williams, you and I have become close. You know, we had some difficulty in the past. We put them aside and I can consider you one of my best friends now. And I really enjoy working with you and to see the legacy that you're gonna leave in Wayne County. And also the rail service. I'm not sure where we stand with that right now, but that's one thing you brought to the attention of, of this board and to the county. And hopefully we'll get a rail system in here one of these days. But to each and every one of you, I've enjoyed working with you. It's been a pleasure. I think most of you have my number. Use it, please. It's just a check on me, okay? And for those people that have had me in their prayers for the last four and a half months, I appreciate it. I'm doing a lot better and God willing, I will continue to improve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
And if anybody really cares about Freeman, he loves curry goat. If you find some good curry goat, West Indian food, make sure you look out for him.
Please do.
What was that again?
It's called curry goat.
Curry goat?
Curry goat, yes.
Is it goat?
It is goat, yes. It's a Jamaican-style dish, yes.
I have not tried that.
Thank y'all. Uh, Freeman, we appreciate your services. As I said earlier, uh, like I said, we've, um, I think we've made a lot of progress, uh, the last four years, uh, as the board. And, uh, we appreciate your, uh, your insight in, in those, uh, endeavors. Like I said, there was a few things that we didn't see out of him, but we've come to the agreement. Um, the, uh, uh, I don't know if I'm supposed to call you Tim, Timmy, Mr. Harold, Dr. Harold?
Commissioner-elect.
Uh, we'll, uh, we, thank you for coming today. Uh, it means a lot and support, uh, of, of the, the board, and we appreciate you being here. Um, the, uh, I do want to thank those that had the confidence and support of those that showed the castor vote for me this past, uh, uh, this past election season, as most on the board didn't, I didn't have a, um, I didn't have a, uh, an opponent. But, uh, but basically worked really hard, uh, on my behalf to, uh, uh, to, uh, get people out to vote. And, uh, so I appreciate, uh, I appreciate those that, uh, that support me. Uh, I attended a, uh, opioid meeting, uh, the quarterly meeting, uh, this past, this past week or last week. Um, all the recipients that, uh, were awarded money were there, or most of them were there. Um, and, uh, to, to give a kind of a, a short synopsis of what they, uh, what they will provide in the services, uh, on things going. And, and I asked them, and I made one comment and I said, you know, this was a competitive process, um, a competitive process to, to be able to be awarded the money to provide the service. But now it's not a competition, it's a team effort. And, uh, and I, and I asked the, uh, staff if there's some way that we can actually, um, have something in, uh, some mechanism for them to be able to, to communicate back and forth for those that they come to one and might need another service that, that we're providing within the county, ask that they kind of be able to talk together on that. Um, let's see where I'm at. Uh, also went to, uh, discussion on farm preservation easement projects. Uh, uh, we had, uh, a lot of questions for the, uh, the presenter. Um, our, I said my main concern going was to make sure that the, uh, that the, the landowners, um, in Wayne County are protected, that we're not, you know, possibly given, uh, easements up to someone that, that, uh, we don't do anything about. Um, but that is a, uh, that is a decision that would be made by the soil and water board. Um, so that would, I don't know if they made a decision, did they or not? Um, I want to, uh, apologize to the members of the Seven Springs Volunteer Fire Department. Something's come to my attention that I should have done my own homework on. So I want to tell you, I apologize, uh, and I'll see what I can do to make it, to fix the issue. Uh, but I, um, when it was brought to my attention, it was, I should have done my own homework on it. So I just want to tell you, I apologize and I'll see you tonight, uh, at Belfast at the Farm Association meeting. Uh, next is, uh, December the second will be our next meeting at nine AM for swearing-in organizational meeting at the Maxwell Center. So we will not be meeting on Tuesday. We'll be meeting on Monday. All right. Anybody got anything else?
Uh, Ms. Carol, pass, gonna put a dress code for that date.
We'll be coat and tie.
Okay. I, I mean, I know.
She can wear a coat and tie, but you're welcome to wear it.
I, I know, you know, sometimes when we take pictures and all, you want to kind of dress alike, but I was, I was just asking.
There may be some pictures. We'll, we'll probably wait and do your official portrait a little later,
Little later, okay.
Rather than that date because I'll have to coordinate with our public affairs department on where and, and that sort of thing.
Okay, Chair?
Yes, sir.
But should make clear that's a, a organizational meeting. There'll be no business conducted.
Yeah, that's what I said, organizational, but I didn't say no bid, no business being conducted. But it'll be at the Maxwell Center at nine o'clock. Sir?
It's a regular meeting, so if some emergency came up that you
We can have a, we can, we can conduct it. All right, see anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed session.
All right.
That's to discuss business in Wayne County.
All right, all in favor, please cast your vote.
I've already closed mine out.
Raise your right hand. I'll double vote down there. ...